Are there any other public comments on this particular item moving forward? Thank you, Mr. Baker. Thank you so much. So we'll now move on to item three, new market tax credits.
Yes, so President Dice, members of the board, it's a pleasure this evening to introduce to you a very exciting item that deals with a possible new financing mechanism for the district in relation to the construction of the ECL. We have this evening with us two gentlemen, Tom Duffy, who some of you know, I'm not sure if all the board members really know Tom. If you do, I'll spare the introduction. But others say that Tom with Murdoch, Walrath and Holmes is probably considered one of the foremost authorities in Sacramento on school finance, school facilities financing. The district has used his services in the past in order to secure eligibility for state school construction bonds and other related matters. And he had called me about, oh, I guess maybe three weeks. It seems like it's, the time has gone quickly, but three weeks ago indicating that there was a new federal funding mechanism that could potentially provide a source of funding for the district called new market tax credits. And they'd already done some preliminary work to determine that we were eligible. And Tom then introduced us to David Tausick, who is here this evening from David Tausick and Associates. And they assist agencies like ours to kind of navigate through the waters of trying to secure this stream of funding. So I'm not going to say much more than that because I know Mr. Tausick has a presentation. And when this was presented to us a few weeks ago, it was a little complicated admittedly, but because of all the different parties involved in this funding source, but I'm sure that the board will understand the concepts here. And so without any further ado, I'm not sure who's going to speak first.
I'll just make a couple of announcements.
Okay. Welcome to the podium. If both of you can step to the podium.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the board and Superintendent Tsukiyama. I'm Tom Duffy, and I appreciate the kind introduction from the superintendent. I will just give a brief introduction of this item and introduce again David Tausick. But I've worked for the district for seven or eight years assisting the district in navigating through the state of California, various state agencies, and also was involved in a piece of legislation that we sponsored for the district for this project, for the joint occupancy document that you have considered and I believe will be entering into with the city. During the period of time, learning from John and also from Miguel over time, that this project was one that required a substantial amount of funding, and there was always a question of where that funding would come from. We had a number of meetings in Sacramento with state agencies, and we were always looking for funding. So as John mentioned a few weeks ago, I called him and said that there is this source of funds for communities in California and throughout the nation, and that to our knowledge, no school district had been able to access this funding, that had been used by other entities within communities for low-income housing and the like. David Tausick can tell you more about that. But that this sounded as if it may be able to augment the funds that you have because you have a community that has supported a general obligation bond, and because you have the relationship with the city of Emeryville and those precious redevelopment agency funds that you wed to your local general obligation bonds to produce this project, the ECL. But that this district had never believed that it had enough money to accomplish all it needed to accomplish. So my conversation with David Tausick was, can we look at Emeryville? He did that. It was exciting because he identified that Emeryville, as John said, appeared to be eligible for funding. It is not a standard for funding for schools, and it is a challenging source of funds. But David's here to identify for you the progress made to date on looking at Emeryville's eligibility for it and what to do from here. So thank you very much. David Tausick is someone that I've known for over 30 years. He had been involved in school financing for a long period of time, was out of school financing for a period of five or six years. And just recently, he and I connected at a conference when he talked about this financing vehicle. And I was able to identify it as potentially one that was here for Emery. So David, thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know how old I am yet, I've been talking to Tom for 30 years. I want to give these out here. I think, you know, I think we've got back to 1990, so hopefully everybody. I might just kind of give a little bit of an overview of the program. First of all, who I am. I'm David Tausick. President David Tausick and Associates. We're a public finance consulting firm. We've been around since 1985. Actually, I used to work for Alameda County for five or six years before I started my own business. And we have offices in Southern California, Northern California, Dallas and Chicago. And we help lots of types of municipalities, cities and counties, as well as land developers, to build public infrastructure. That's kind of what we specialize in. Schools is one part of that, but we actually do a lot of roads and sewers and water lines and police stations and fire stations. And school facilities is one aspect of what we do. And to make a long story short, I sold off my schools division to a senior employee who I really liked about five, six years ago, and he went off and did schools. And we're now back in the business. We had a six-year non-compete. But, you know, there was a recession that occurred a few years ago, and we found that a lot of the new development that needed infrastructure was no longer occurring. And so we began to look for different types of programs to work with. And there are a number of state grant and federal grant programs we got involved with, but we also got involved with this new markets tax credit program. And it's a federal program. It actually has bipartisan support, which is almost unheard of in Washington. And what the program does is it looks for low-income communities, and it looks at businesses, actually private businesses mostly, that want to locate in low-income communities. And the feds say, we'll give you 25%, approximately 25% of the funding for this business that you want to put in, but you have to go out and bring an equity or a loan or something along those lines because we're trying to attract private capital into these communities. And they've designated the communities based upon census track income and poverty levels and unemployment. And lo and behold, Emeryville is right there as one of the more qualified communities. And the way they set up the program is the federal government creates these tax credits that are basically purchased by major banks, Bank of America, US Bank, JP Morgan Chase. They purchase these tax credits at a discount, and then they turn around and over seven years, they get a reduction in what taxes they pay, dollar for dollar, for every tax credit dollar that they purchase. So if they buy a million dollars' worth of tax credits, they may pay $800,000 for that, those million dollars' worth of tax credits. For the next seven years, over seven years, they get to take one-seventh, basically, of the million dollars every year off of their taxes every year. So suddenly, somebody has $800,000. That $800,000 is the money that goes into building, helping businesses, not just recreate it, but also to survive in these particular communities. And the famous examples that I remember reading about about 10 years ago were these desert food areas, where you had a low-income area, and Safeway wouldn't go in, and Ralph's wouldn't go in, and Lucky's wouldn't go in. And so they would help subsidize. That's kind of how the program started. And I noticed while I was still not working for school districts that what Tom noted about schools not using this financing, well, somebody figured it out. The charter schools figured it out because they said, gosh, we need money from the outside. And they said, well, we're private companies, we're nonprofits, but we're not school districts. We're separate entities, and we're creating these school facilities. Let's go after this funding. And sure enough, particularly in Southern California, a lot of these new market tax credits have been used by charter schools. So as soon as my non-compete ended in January, I hired somebody who's been very, very involved with new market tax credits. First, I talked to him and said, I'm about to start working with school districts again. There are some school districts that are in some pretty distressed areas that really need help. If they created nonprofits to own a facility or a portion of facility or a component of facility, would they be eligible for this program, just like a charter school would? And not only did he say yes, but he vetted it with two top attorneys in the business, as well as the people who sell tax credits, as well as the people who buy the tax credits. And all of them said they saw no reason why this couldn't move ahead. So you and San Ana Unified and Chino Unified are the first three school districts in the state, all happen to be my clients now, to go after this particular funding. And there was a conference in Washington just two weeks ago because they issued the credits for 2014, the three and a half billion in credits for 2014, the first week in June. And I said to members of my staff, one of whom is this individual who's very experienced, and definitely the most exciting of the programs was your program. And the reason is, I know you're wonderful people and all that great stuff, and you put up with a lot, but besides that, the bottom line is that your program not only has school facilities, but it has health facilities and it has library facilities. And this program is intended for two things. One, to create jobs in low-income areas. Number two, to provide services that are not currently provided in those areas. You're the first health services facility in the city of Emeryville. You're the first library facility in the city of Emeryville. So you kind of hit all the buttons. And so we got three institutional investors who are interested in buying your tax credits. I know, isn't believable. Yeah, I was just so excited when they got back and said, this is the one. So we're still going with the others. We're not going to stop. And the other thing, by the way, I should let you know, long story, is the 2014 grants were just given. When the grants are given, they're given to organizations called community development entities throughout the United States, and they are given the ability to sell tax credits. And so those were given out. And these guys, when they apply to the federal government to be one of those who was selected to get community, to be a community development entity, to be able to sell tax credits, and it's a major competition, a lot of people want to do it, they have to have a list of projects that they intend to fund. And they put their applications in, starting in the fall of the prior year, to get the funding in the following June. So a lot of these guys had their projects already selected. We're going to those whose projects have fallen out or have some issue about a project that didn't turn out to be as good as they wanted, or the main thing is, projects that say they've got the 75%, give us the other 25%, but don't really have the 75%. I've been assured, Dr. Tsukiyama, that you have the 75%. So I know he's not going to be here next time, but otherwise, I wouldn't be here because we can't do it unless you have the other 75%.
Dr. Rubio told me we have the 75%.
Right, right. I don't know who to yell at next time. So anyway, so that's the key. But the other part of it, which is really great, is I'm pretty sure, I mean, I can't promise because I haven't done this with the schools before. I think we have a really good shot at getting funding in 2014, but even if not, we're going to be first on the list for 2015. And you guys, I was listening, you have a two-year construction schedule. So the key thing we have to do, and I've been talking to Tom, we've got to get a component or two because your project is too big. We can go out and for every $10 million that you have in construction, if you provide seven and a half million, we can get two and a half million. Probably the amount of money we could get for this project would be somewhere between two and a half and five million. In other words, we could take a $10 or $20 million component. The guy on my staff who knows this stuff says, this is one, we're going to go with the full 20, 21 million and try to get two community development entities to give us their, sell tax credits on our behalf. So we have to select out a portion of the project. And then the key thing, the little twist, which is annoying, but it's just the way it works on these programs, is that this is not a program to subsidize public agencies. So we have to have a nonprofit own that component for a seven-year period, and then you, the district, essentially lease the facility for seven years. I'll explain how that all works. And then it comes back to you. The nonprofit can have, it's usually their 5% nonprofits. We can have two board members. We cannot have a majority of board members because there has to be a separate entity from the school district. Well, we can have two board members, Dr. Tsukiyama, if he wants to come back, the new superintendent, the facilities director, the head of the union, I mean, whoever it is. Obviously, you want people who are in sync with what you think to be on this particular board. And their only function really is to handle the money for this portion. You're going to have the same contractor do the work. They're physically in charge of the construction. They're in charge in terms of like, your board is in charge of building something. They're in charge of building it. They have the same staff and the same facilities director and the same contractor and all that do the work. And then for seven years, you make lease payments. And the lease payments, I'll explain, are very, very low. And then after seven years, you get the project back. And in return, you get this funding. And I'm not showing the presentation because I think, yet, although I'll get into it if you want, the thing about the lease program I have to explain is that the way it's structured, it's one big loan. You, the school district, are going to lend this nonprofit $7.5 million that you're using for this project anyway, and it's going to go into an escrow fund, and it has to be used to pay your contractor. The tax credits will then come in with $2.5 million that they will also loan to this nonprofit. So this nonprofit is going to have $10 million of loans outstanding, $7.5 million from you and $2.5 million from these tax credits. There is no carrying cost on the tax credits. Basically, it's a half percent or 1% per year to pay for the accounting that has to go on. But then after seven years, it's forgiven. So that $2.5 million, you really don't pay back. The other $7.5 million is a loan from the school district to this nonprofit. The nonprofit collects a lease payment from you. So the nonprofit has, the nonprofit turns around and gives it back to you because you're the one who made the loan. So it's kind of an accounting circle where you make a lease payment, the guys who make the lease payment give the money back to you. And in other words, the lease payment doesn't cost you anything. And if it is something like you're using a GO bond, let's say you have interest rates on a GO bond, the lease payment would be tied into the GO bond. So if you're paying 4% interest on the GO bond for the $7.5 million that you lend to this nonprofit, your lease payment will be the 7.5% interest plus the amortization that you'd be paying anyway to the guys who sold you the GO bonds, and the GO bond payment will go through. So in terms of your general fund being on the line, the only concept, if you used a GO bond to fund a portion of this, you owe money in the GO bond, you owe money on a lease that goes to the GO bond, exact same dollar amounts. If you have fees you've collected from developers, like in Clovis, we have more fees, well, then there's nobody to pay back, so there's no payment. But you have, I understand you have a local bond that you sold, so that's probably going to be some of the money. So your lease payment would pay that loan off, just the same as you would pay it off yourself through the general fund. So it's all kind of set up that way. But the big issue is, and the decision you have to make, and a lot of public agencies have done this, selling these things called certificates of participation, and I don't know if you've been involved in those at all, where you have a nonprofit essentially own the facility, lease it to the school district, and then after seven years, it goes back to be owned by the school district itself. And that's basically the concept in 25 words or less. And the funding would be between $2.5 million and $5 million, and we have excited investors, US Bank, JP Morgan Chase, and something called the California CSCDA, which is California Statewide Community Development Authority, with the three guys who are all interested in this project and want more information. And it's up to us and Mr. Duffy to provide that information to them because they want details. They want to know who gets healthcare services, who's operating it, are there records of what kinds of income those people are going to have. Same with the library, same with the schools. Are there community facilities in the schools? Does the community come in? I can show you the map of the community if, just go through, again, I'm willing to go through this whole thing, but I just want to pass it. How do I go back?
Do you have any comment?
Sure.
To provide some of the information to the potential investors, we needed more information about the project. And so it's been helpful to have Mark and John, and to meet with John and talk to Miguel and also Juliette, was it yesterday I was here? To get information more about the district and those programs. And so what we are putting together is a document that's a summary with also some data about construction costs, the potential number of construction jobs, as well as jobs that would be created after the project is moving along. They're interested in that kind of information. Can I give you a little time to grab that?
I got it. Okay, here we go. I got it. And I guess I can, I've kind of done, and you can look through it at your leisure, what I just described was pretty much the way the program works. Why this slideshow is not working the way it's supposed to, I don't know, but try it again. Okay. Enter.
You have a series of slides.
Oh, you think so?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. My gosh, you've done this before. Okay, great. Okay, anyway, this is the community. And just so you know, the pink or red area is the highly distressed area. The yellow area is an eligible area.
My microphone.
The yellow area is an eligible area. You can see, we're best off if the site itself is in a red area, but the fact that it is in a yellow area, the site itself means it's still eligible, but we have to go an extra step and talk about the community that it is serving. They call it a target population. And in this case, the target population would be the children who attend the school and other members of the community. The big limit, the bottom line is, at least 40% of the students attending the school have to have subsidized lunches. If you go over 40%, then we qualify as a target population. And the fact that we're in a red, a yellow area and not a red area won't make any difference. And my understanding is you guys passed the 40% test, so that would be it. So you guys are top of the line, and we have three interested parties. So we're pretty excited. We're excited about the other two projects too, but we think this one is probably the most likely to get funded in 2014. But you are the first school district that is not a charter school in the state of California to go after this funding. I mean, it's an honor, but it's also a little scary because why hasn't anybody else done this before? And we checked, it's done in other states, it's just nobody in California's done it.
Well, I think if you, you heard Ms. Shaw say that a prior school board member, Josh Simon, I mean, I remember Josh has been talking about this for probably about three or four years. And for some reason, we just never endeavored into researching it. But now, you know, when Mr. Duffy came to the district and said that this opportunity was available, it was like, okay, let's look at this. Because, you know, we've already heard about it, but we just have not ever heard the details of it. And, I mean, for me, this is a great financing tool to assist us in what we're doing.
Thank you for the presentation thus far, and you may have more that you want to get into. A few questions. Can you, give me the math again on how the tax credits work? It's this kind of thing like the rule of perpetuities that has a half-life of about, you know, a month for me, and then I forget, have to relearn again how that works.
All right, let me actually borrow the sample.
Yeah.
So what happens is, I told you about community development entities, community development entities are these organizations, some of which are local organizations, some of which are non-compete.
No, it's dying.
Oh, really? Okay, thanks. I got an excuse. Thank you so much.
Excessive.
So what happens is, this community development entity, and as I said, there's three of them who are interested, they might be awarded $30 million worth of projects that they can sell tax credits for. $30 million is fairly typical.
So the bank is the community development entity?
Well, okay, so banks have an apartment that does this. They can. And of course, this is all very political, who gets the money. But in addition, for instance, CSCDA is a state agency that's interested in this, and they have the money too. So they're not a bank in that case. And they get awarded $30 or $35 million worth of projects that they can do through these tax credits. By the way, there's about 80 done nationally per year, typically 80 separate projects. So $30 million is kind of about three projects worth. $10 million apiece is a $2.5 million subsidy. If we go get $20 million, we'd have to have two different agencies probably giving, because each one wants to do three deals. They don't want to just do one deal. They want to get funded again. And to get funded again, you have to show success. And that means you've done good projects that actually get built. You can get the money out there, that's the object, and you've got low-income, you've got services and jobs in low-income communities. So let's say, so what happens is, they take ECL and they say, okay, we love this project. We'll do $10 million worth. And of course, we have to give them the projects to do. So we'll say, here's $10 million worth, this is the health facility, happens to be 10 or 12 or 13 million. Here's the library, it's 11 million. Here's the school. Schools are not as in favor this year, so we're not going to push that this year, although it may be, because I think too many charter schools used it, and that wasn't the idea. Anyway, so what happens is, the institutional investor then, and this would be like US Bank, JP Morgan, Wells Fargo Center, goes to the new market, goes to the CDEs and says, okay, I want to buy $10 million worth of projects from you because I want tax credits. The rule is that if the project is $10 million, the CDE can sell tax credits equal to 39% of the cost of the school. So if it's a $10 million school, that means they can buy $3.9 million worth of tax credits. So US, some major institutional investor comes in and says, okay, you're going to do this school, the school looks good for us, we want CRA credits anyway because we're a big bank and we're supposed to invest in low-income areas, this is perfect for us, so we'll buy 3.9 million. We're not going to pay you 3.9 million because we want those deductions over seven years. And, yeah, we're sure to get them, but we have to give you money now, we have to wait seven years to deduct all the money, we want to return our investment. So they'll pay 80 to 84 cents on the dollar. So basically, instead of getting a full 3.9 million, you're going to get somewhere around 3.2 million in funding. So they get 3.9 million in bonds, so they're happy, which is, sorry, 3.9, these are not bonds, 3.9 million in tax credits, so they're happy. By the way, that's probably one of the reasons this program's got bipartisan support is the banks really like it because they're getting tax credits, why not? And how can they lose? It's automatic, you know. Anyway, so it's a great investment for them. Tax credits are taken over a seven-year period. They get $500,000 annually for the first three years, $600,000 annually for the next four years to use the full 3.9 million, and they are very, very happy campers. Okay, the flow of funds, and this is the first time I've shown this flow of funds. Let's see if this works. So first of all, we've got the school district, okay? And the school district has got money coming from development impact fees, local bond issues, maybe state grant money, you know, something along those lines. So they've got $7.5 million that they can invest in this project. So what happens is, they, from one source, they make a $5 million loan. This is, if they got state grants, for instance, they give a $5 million loan that is a state grant from, basically, they are the lender, the school district becomes the lender. And the district also has, in this case, local bond issue, 1.8 million, I'm just making numbers up. So basically, the leveraged lender, which is actually the district itself, has $6.8 million that they're going to lend to this nonprofit that you created that's going to own this component of the school. The new market tax credit investor, okay, there's 6, he's going to loan 3.198 million. Remember I said he only, he pays 80 to 84 cents on the dollar for the tax credits? So for 3.9 million tax credits, he's going to write a check, this is a big institutional bank, for about $3.2 million. The federal government is happy because you have found 6.8 million somewhere else to put in. So now we have the full $10 million paid for, of which 3.198 million is from the tax credit investor, 6.8 million is from you. It's all put into an investment fund. So we have a $10 million investment that's qualified. It can only be invested in this low-income area for the project that you designated, which is ECL. The CDE is the guy who officially sells the tax credits, and he becomes the bank. He holds, like an escrow company, he holds the money that you're lending, which is a 6.8 million, and the money from the new market tax credit investor, which I'm calling a loan, but really isn't a loan because it's forgiven, so it's never paid back, but it's considered a loan for purposes of how this thing is structured. So there's two notes. There's a $6.8 million note that's to pay you back for the money that you loaned, and then a $3.2 million B note that's supposed to be paid back to the new market tax credits investor, but actually never is repaid. This all goes to this nonprofit that you set up that's going to be owning this particular facility. You're the operator, you're the district. He will give you an operating lease. You'll make lease payments. So you'll make lease payments to cover the $6.8 million A note. The A note was the money that you loaned, and if it's from a local bond issue, you would charge the interest. If it's from an impact fee or a Mellow Roost district or something where you don't have to pay it back, then it doesn't have to be any payment. But you're essentially loaning the money at 0% interest in that case. And what happens is, the way the money goes back is, there's an interest payment that's paid when the lease payment goes to this nonprofit that owns the component, and I'll slow down here. The nonprofit has this money that it got in the lease payment, it makes an interest payment. The interest payment goes through the CDE, back to the investment fund. Some of it comes back to you because you loaned them $6.8 million. So if there's interest on it or whatever, you're supposed to pay that money back. So your lease payment is essentially paying you back for this money that you loaned, but of course, you're out the lease payment money, so you're even. The money that goes back to the tax credit investor, 3.9 million tax credits, he forgives that. So there really is no interest payment. So the only interest payment that really, your lease payment is just enough to pay you, the school district, back for the loan that you made. And then that goes to pay back for local bond issue, if you guys have bondholders. Or if you don't have bondholders, then there's nothing to really pay back. And so basically, what happens is you've got this cycle going through of a loan coming to a nonprofit with a loan coming from you and from the new market tax credit investor. The new market tax credit investor never gets paid back. You get paid back based on some interest rate that you determine along with your nonprofit, which as I told you before, is an organization that probably has two of you sitting on the board, as well as three other people. And after seven years, the other loan is forgiven, and the property goes back to the school district. And that's all set up by lawyers, which is another thing, there's a lot of legal fees on this program I discovered in the ones that I've worked on. Because you have a lawyer, the community development entity has a lawyer, and the investor has a lawyer. So there's three different lawyers involved, and obviously, there's a cost to that. That all comes out of the proceeds, it's all done contingent on the, the closing of the bond deal.
And the, um, yeah, well, I'm, I'm glad there are a lot of lawyers involved because there are a lot of, a lot of lines on the page there that, uh,
I know, I know.
That, that, that some of us who are lawyers, uh, you know, um, know enough to know that, that we want someone who's an expert in this, looking at those lines. But it has to be very firm that, that this is forgiven, that it's a loan that's not getting paid back.
That's correct.
So that, yeah, and that, um, also, the, this nonprofit, uh, entity that you say they own, you know, that ten million dollar chunk of the facility. So there's some transaction by where we, the district, donate to them?
That's correct.
Or give them this facility for nothing?
Yes, with the understanding that they only get it for seven years.
Uh-huh.
And they collect lease payments from you for seven years, and you have to make those lease payments.
Mm-hmm.
And then once the lease payments are done after seven years, it goes back to you. So the lawyers, I, I mean, they've done this a lot of times before. I mean, it's, they've done it, I guess it's, over, over seven hundred and fifty of these have been done nationally over the last fourteen years.
And you said that this has been done in other states for, uh, school construction?
That's correct.
Is that right? Do, do you know how many, uh, projects have been for schools and other states?
Charter schools have been the ones who've really gone to town because they have the nonprofits, they have to have them in. You know more about charter schools than I do. I've never really worked with a charter school, but they have a nonprofit anyway. Uh, so they're set up for this, it's perfect for them.
I'd be curious to know how many, uh, school districts, yeah, traditional.
They're the dependent charter schools where it would be the school district doing it, I suppose, right? Because a dependent charter school does have the school board, but then the independent charter schools are something different, so.
And may I just add, while he's coming to the podium, that it turns out that John Baker has, although he has not been involved in the details of this piece, that he has had some projects in his work experience that has, that have utilized, uh, New Market Tax Credits, just for the information to the board.
No, uh, one was a community center, uh, built by the city of San Pablo.
John, use the mic.
I'm sorry, the other was a, uh, a mixed-use project by the city of, built, it was a joint venture between the city of Berkeley, a nonprofit housing developer, and a nonprofit organization.
So those, those were projects that were more the traditional use of the New Market Tax Credits. And to, to answer the, the, the question that, that you just brought up. In, under the law in California, a school district can approve a charter that is an independent charter. You may approve a charter that basically you operate. I believe if, if it's the dependent charter, the board then is that, that entity that governs. So the, so these would be independent charters, like the one in Santa Ana that, uh, just opened last year. That, that it's an independent charter, has its own body that, that is that nonprofit that oversees it. So I think the, the uniqueness here, and I think your, your question about the attorneys and the lines, and I, and I think blending that with your, your comment about COPs, is that when school districts do certificates of participation, they create a nonprofit entity. Sometimes the, the county superintendent of schools offers that, sometimes a grouping of districts offer it, there, there are some that are statewide. Uh, when I was a superintendent, we did this a couple of times to issue COPs, where the board itself, so we, we didn't, we didn't have to worry about not just having two board members, but the board itself and I were this nonprofit entity that basically had the lease arrangements going back and forth. So it's not an uncommon thing for school districts to do. The uncommon thing is doing it for New Market's Tax Credits because, as we both said, it hasn't been done before.
Great, I appreciate that extra information, and, um, I would, I would be, uh, very interested to, to get information about where traditional districts have done this in other states, if, if, just so we know it's been done.
I have one question, um, David, and that is, um, and I think we talked about this, uh, when, uh, you guys came down a couple of weeks ago for the meeting and did a similar presentation, but, um, and the question is, the district has to make those lease payments.
That's correct.
What is the funding source to make those lease payments?
Well, if you're paying back a general obligation bond, it's probably your general fund. I don't, I don't know what else it would be, because that's what pays back a general obligation bond. So if that was the money you used, your lease payment would be tied into that security. The, the people who sold you the general obligation bond want to be paid back, and if you're using their money for that, you could, in this program.
It's not, it's not the general fund, it's, it's the tax supported by the GO.
Okay, but isn't that considered a general fund?
No, no, it's completely different, but.
Okay, it's, it's the fund that's dedicated to that particular purpose. So if it's not the general fund, it would be the fund that's dedicated to paying back the general obligation debt from the bonds that you sold? Um, and that would be the fund, because the people who sold, who bought those bonds want to get paid back. You can't just give away their money and not have a way to pay them back. And this lease arrangement is such that your lease payment would be equivalent to what you would normally be paying the general obligation bondholders, just like, uh, you would be doing if you didn't go through all this, but it would be done through a lease payment.
So, so we give our money, our lease pay, I mean, we give our money that we would pay to the bondholders, we give it to this entity?
Which then pays you back, yeah.
Who gives it to the bond, do they give it to the bondholders?
No, 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 no.
How do the bondholders get paid?
It goes back to you, and you give it to the bondholders. The trick is that they have to accept the lease payment from you. The lease payment, it's whatever's negotiated, but the lease payment is equivalent to whatever it is that you have to pay for that money. Because they're leasing a facility, and the dollar amount that they lease for is the same amount that you, as a school district, need to pay back whatever that debt is, whatever the source of funding is. So it, it, it just revolves around, and essentially, you loan them the money that you got from the GO bond issue. That's how it starts. This nonprofit is them, they hold this particular money. You lease the facility from them, you meaning the school district, you make a lease payment to this nonprofit. The nonprofit turns around and pays it back to whoever loaned them the money. Well, you loaned them the money, right? Because you were the one who loaned them the six point eight million, so they pay you back. And of course, you owe that money to the bondholders because you didn't get the six, eight point eight million out of nowhere.
So the timing, are they, are they, uh, is all happening within about the same month or so?
Actually, um, you pay, normally with a lease payment, you'd pay monthly, and it would go to, to the nonprofit, then go back to the school district. And then the school district, twice a year, would be making payments on the bonds, because that's how it works with bonds. So it would, there'd be, there'd have to be an official accounting where you made a lease payment, and then the money came back to you. You have to go through that step. And it's a legal fiction that was set up when this program was created, and that's how it works for New Markets Tax Credits for anybody who does it, whether it's a school or a, some kind of commercial facility or whatever it is, whoever uses that particular funding.
Okay.
I'm not sure I have a question as much as I'm kind of troubled by.
Mm-hmm.
All our mics are dying. It's, it's the end of the year, our, we, our batteries are all, are all dying in the district.
Um, you think as much as I talk, that would be, uh, not an issue, but, uh, as I listen to this, what, I, I, certain terms pop into my head as you describe this. I mean, this is, to me, the equivalent of a lease, lease back, I mean, we're, we're going to.
Correct.
But the other, the term that troubles me, and sort of this whole concept, there's two things that stand out. The whole purpose of, of our involvement is we create a shell corporation. You know, it's a nonprofit, but we, we create a shell corporation and launder mon-, launder money. That troubles me. Um, I know people do it all the time, but just because something is legal and doesn't necessarily mean it's ethical. I'm staring John in the eye right now, and I'm realizing, you know, it, there's a lot of lawyers involved because that's what this is. This is just a, a big attempt to circumvent the intent of this law, which was not to develop school properties, but to develop other things. And so I'm just, I, I'm troubled by that. I'm troubled by, we go to, we, we pay a lot of legal fees to create a, a shell to funnel money, and it, while I, I hate to look, you know, five million dollars in, in the mouth, there's something that troubles me that we're, we're going to spend a lot of money on legal fees to circumvent the intent of a law, just not the letter. And so I, I, you know, and, and so I, I want to sort of address that, that, as you talk about other people that have done it, has Congress sort of addressed this sort of, you know, we're just going to turn a blind eye to it, or?
Uh, actually, in, in June, uh, there was a bipartisan, I mean, I, I'm just telling you honestly what's happened. Uh, in June, there was a bipartisan bill that is now in the House to extend the program indefinitely. They have been approving it year by year by year, it's been three and a half billion every year, and the idea is now to extend it indefinitely. Whether it's the banks, because they like the tax credits, whether it's the Republicans, because they like the fact that you're not going directly to a public, there's no public bureaucracy. These are private entities called community development entities that sell the tax credits. So you're sort of circumventing the entire idea of having HUD or, uh, you know, some other agency dole out the money. It's all done through the private, so maybe they like it because it's a private program. Uh, also, um, organizations that maybe wouldn't normally catch the eye of some federal agency, particularly in rural areas, a lot of this money goes to rural areas. I think the key thing, and, and again, I'm not, I'm not speaking to the, the, um, you know, I, I actually, I'm speaking to the letter of the law as well as the spirit of the law. You have to be providing a service that's not in the area right now. Yeah, you're not a Ralph's, so you're not providing grocery services, but you're providing library services and health services. That's clearly the intent of the law, and they make you go through all these motions. It would be nice if you just could apply for a grant, I suppose, and get the money and use it, and that's the end of it. They have the structure set up, go ahead.
Let me, let me just comment though, but the, really, from the federal side, the intent really is, by, by giving tax credits, it's a cheaper way for the federal government to support economic development in those communities that need it, right?
That's a, that's a.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot cheaper than having to actually appropriate dollars to pour into.
It's somebody else's money that, that is go, that is being spent upfront to provide a service that the government wants to provide. And, and it's cheaper for them to offer the tax credit. And, and to, to answer your question, and I, and I, I, I was intrigued by the way that you phrased it, because you, you talked about the ethical nature of this. As a public agency, you don't gain from any tax credit that's available. You can't, because you're a public agency. This is there for those that pay taxes. But because of need, this structure was created, and, and it's not a farce, and it's not, it, the way I look at it, it's not something that is put together to do a sleight of hand. It's there to address, to be a bridge, because you, you do not pay taxes. Somebody that does pay taxes says, we'll subsidize, because that's what this is, is a subsidy, this project, and we'll bridge the fact that you don't pay taxes, and that the entity over here that does pay taxes gets the tax break. You get the benefit of the project and the service, they get the tax break. And, and it's simply, it's simply that. We, we ran into this, uh, several years ago in, in trying to resolve something in Sacramento. Part of what I do is lobby for, for public schools, and, and schools never have enough money. And, and always looking for a way to see if we could generate capital dollars for schools, because there's never enough. The infrastructure in Cali-, we have ten thousand schools in California, and the infrastructure is aging all the time. And the state, and, and the, the governor and, and legislature are considering things like the bond, I, I was in a hearing today, because there's a, there's a proposed bond. But we, we're not sure if we're going to get to that bond. My point is that, that this is a way for the government, and here, the federal government, extremely important, to subsidize school districts being able to provide not only the, the bricks and mortar, but also to support the services to the children i- in that bricks and mortar setting, because you don't have enough money to cover all the needs that you have.
If that were, if that was accurate, we wouldn't have to set up the shell corporation. And that's my challenge. It's not the intent of the law, it's not the funding stream, I love the idea of tax credits, I get all of that. What I'm saying is that the fact that we have to create an entity that, you know, we're paying lease, that we're paying lease payments to, so they can pay them back to us, that's where I'm troubled, is that, you know, we're, we're, if the law were such, then we could take the loan out straight from the financial institution. Because we have to create this nonprofit, and you can talk about charter schools doing it, and, you know, I'm not a big fan of charter schools, but they're a nonprofit for a reason, and there's some political, um, impetus for them. As wrong-headed as it is, it's there. And so that's where my, that's where I sort of, and again, it's, you know, I, it's an ethical thing for me.
So I have a question, and I appreciate the, the questions. Um, out of the seven hundred, I think, or so across the country that have been done, is that the typical arrangement? That there is a nonprofit setup or some, some entity set up? Is that the typical way it's arranged?
For nonprofit with a charter, for charter school, yes. For other facilities, it's actually a real company that is going to be manufacturing widgets, and, and so.
That pays taxes.
Yeah, that pays taxes, and it's, it's just a, it's, it's a limited, you know, partnership, or it's a, it's a corporation, but it, a lot of these are private company. The ones I've done have been private companies that have gone.
So there needs to be some entity, basically. So basically, what you're saying is that by the nature of the ECCL project, we have the possibility of, and there may be different opinions on it based on, I understand the questioning, uh, the questions, but we have the, an opportunity that could be a win-win, one for the community and the project, as well as the institutional investors, if I understand correctly.
I'm wondering, okay.
And, and the federal government has the benefit of knowing that they're providing for a service that, and, uh, capital dollars that they're not giving direct dollars to. And one of the things, just, uh, one of the things you, you reminded me of.
Tom, you're on the mic.
School districts in California can't take out a mortgage. It, it's unconstitutional for you to do that. That's why a COP exists, because you, you, you may be using this money to build a school, I did that, but you, you, you create a shell corporation in order to pay lease payments to get around the constitutional prohibition against you taking out a loan, or me taking out a loan for, for the district. You can't do it under state law. But everybody agrees, it was, it was part of a, a discussion in, in, uh, in a hearing last week. Everybody agrees that it's okay to do this in order to get around the constitution because it, of the service that's being provided. And you could go out and, and you could lease a relocatable building and put it in, in, you know, plain sight of everybody and pay that lease payment, or you can take out a COP and build an entire school from the ground up. What's the difference? It's, it's a lease, it's the, it's the COP. And, and this, this is not unlike that, because you create that, that, uh, other corporation, the shell corporation. But I think the, the, you, you, your, your idea of the win-win, it is there, but even the federal government gets to say, look at what we're doing, because we're encouraging you to basically pull yourself up by what you're doing in the community. And part of the beauty of this was when, uh, the, the map, when David showed me the map, because we, we were looking to see whether or not this would work. And, and the map was, it was clear. And he said, this is a, this is a perfect case, because you, you meet, you meet the federal requirements, and you also entice the investors.
Yeah, and I, I was.
That may not satisfy your, your thinking, but I think it's the logic to me.
Yeah, yeah, and I totally understand your thinking. Um, you know, part of it is, by the way, that, um, these investors and the community development entities, they do have a choice of projects. They're all over this one, you know, um, they like the, I guess some of them know Emeryville, uh, and they like the idea of the health facilities, libraries. So they're choosing you over others, and you're right. I mean, they will find somebody else to do this for, it's not going to change the program, uh, and somebody else would be doing it. Maybe it would be a for-profit company, uh, that wouldn't have to do a shell, uh, that's very possible. The money's going to be used for, it's just a matter of whether, you know, you, um, want to take advantage of it or not, and that certainly is your choice. Um, you don't have to, um, it's, there's no requirement, there's no bonds, uh, you know, they don't have to go to a vote of the people. It's, it's, it's a tax credit, um, uh, transaction, pure and simple.
So I, I guess, um, this depresses my thinking that, uh, I, I agree, it does seem a little funky, and the, and the laundering kind of idea did, did come to me as well. Like, why are we doing, why do we have to go through all these machinations to get some money to build a project? It seemed that that's, uh, you know, a great project. Your explanations help with some of that, 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 you know, it's this bridge between how do you get this tax credit from a for-profit entity that can, really wants those tax credits and, and, uh, to, to, you know, money in a nonprofit entity that, you know, is limited in being able to do certain things like take out mortgages and other things, so that, so that's helpful. I, I, um, I, I, I would like, you know, to have our own legal counsel take a look at this and, and make sure that, uh, that it is, uh, on, you know, on the up and up, and it's legal, and that it's, um, you know, that's why I'd like to know that there are other traditional districts in other states that are doing this, Congress knows about that, uh, and that as long as they're, you know, creating new services in low-income communities, that, that Congress and the regulators and others are, are happy with it, then I guess I, I'm, you know, willing to, uh, then I would understand it as this is crazy government bureaucracy to, you know, so that the Republicans can say, we built stuff in low-income communities. so that the Republicans can say, we built stuff in low-income communities without actually giving money to low-income communities. So if that's what we have to do to get some money to, out of the federal government, okay. Like, I'm willing to create this intermediate mechanism, I guess would be my thought, assuming we have our own legal independent counsel that, that kind of something up in the... My, my other two questions were that, that there seemed to be a requirement that the, the money, well, I had three questions. First, you said it was about 2.5 million, your example, I don't know if it was just because of the example, but there was 3.2 million.
Right.
So, and, and, but all we could benefit from is to, so is that 700,000 in fees, or is that...
700,000, CDE, we just gave examples from other projects that we've worked on. And CDE gets 4% of the 10, they're the ones, and they have to go get the money from the federal government, which involves a very, very complicated application process. Only about one in four get approved, so three quarters of them are wasting their time. One quarter that are approved. They charge usually about 4% for that. The attorney is usually somewhere around 2% to 3%, somewhere along those lines. There's an accounting firm that's involved because we have to measure, make sure the money goes through properly, and every year they have to check and make sure that's okay. Well, my firm, sorry, sorry. Sorry. So informal here. My, my firm generally gets about 2% of the total amount, so that's another, another cost. Between all the costs, you're right, out of about 3.2 million, you wind up somewhere around 2.5, 2.6 net. Everybody operates on contingency, so the only cost upfront is we charge $15,000 to move ahead with this because it's so much work, and we move along on that, and we just hope the deal closes. We do underwrite ourselves, and we do, before we take a job seriously, we kind of ask around, is this something you'd be interested in? So we have turned down a number of school districts because they didn't have the cachet that you have. Having said that, I don't think there's going to be any shortage of them. It's just a matter of finding the right jobs. And in, in Santa Ana, they have this giant recreational facility that serves all the community soccer teams and all that stuff. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's what we would do. But we're, you know, we're pretty confident you would be able to get funding, so we're real excited about you. But obviously, you should have your attorneys look at it. Worst comes to worst, I mean, you could just be a 2015 applicant. It's not like, you know, these guys are interested in you in 2014, but that doesn't mean they won't be in 2015. But it is, time is of the essence in terms of this particular application period. But 2015 is not that far away, so that's, that's your other option. You can just wait on it, and, I mean, you'd have to get started because we want to get you on the list before these guys put their applications in for next year. Applications are put in late in the fall, so we'd want you on the list by then. But that's another opportunity, so.
So the, the, the fees come out of basically the credits, as you say, in contingency. It's not like we are paying...
All the attorneys work on the come, so it's...
We are paying out of our general fund, the fees.
Right.
It seemed that there's, 15,000 seem to be all that we would be on the hook for. There's another 15,000 we pay later, but that's only if the project's already kind of going through.
That's correct. To be honest with you, nobody else is taking a chance by us because everybody else, we have the CDE's approval. I mean, it's, it's all to matter, they do the legal documents. Once everybody agrees, there's a term sheet, everybody agrees to the term sheet. So I don't think they take all that much risk. But anyway, but the trick is that for some reason or other it fell apart, then they wouldn't be able to get the money. And we have done, I did one deal where the, the 70% wasn't there at the very end. The 75% was not there, and the whole deal fell apart, and everybody wasted their time. So that does happen. We're the only ones who get paid upfront is because we have to bring this to all these school districts, and then we have to put together the package to convince the CDEs that they want to invest in this. And also, at the same time, we talk to the community development entities, we talk to the buyers, the investors in the tax credits, because we want both of them in sync. We don't want the CDE to say, yes, we can sell it and then not really have a buyer. Then we're wasting our time too. And I, I didn't explain, the gentleman who is on my staff now worked for JP Morgan, actually, he was not at the last meeting that you guys had, but he worked for JP Morgan Chase. They are the biggest purchaser, investor in these bonds, and he was the main underwriter in their West Coast office. So he, he knows everybody. I'm not, I, the other person on my staff who went with him to Washington, he bought more of these than anybody else did in his previous role. So I'm, I'm very fortunate to have him on my staff. Otherwise, I wouldn't try something like this because I know what we've done before. I want to keep doing what I've done before successfully. But all systems go, and the fact that we have both the buyers and sellers of tax credits interested means you've got a really good chance of funding.
And it's, you know, I mean, I, I take some comfort in knowing that folks, that the other entities in this process, CDE, the buyers, the sellers, the tax credit, look at our project and say, yeah, that's doable, that's going to work under this. We're willing to put our money in that because they, they understand it to be, you know, well within the parameters of what, what this program is intended to do.
And we've had failure, you know, remember Banton School District? I mean, we went out there, met with them, great project.
They, they were talking about a district that we thought really met the test, that are very small districts, a very small school district, and the...
It was in California?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's in San Joaquin County.
Yeah.
Agricultural workers.
Yeah, it looked like it, it made, made the test, and it, and it did not. The, the board was excited about it, the superintendent was excited about it. And they have, they have substantial need beyond, way beyond your need. And, and not the ability to, to meet all the things that you're going to be doing. And, and we just said, it's not, you're not going to be able to make it. It's not going to, not going to work. They were very disappointed.
And it, and it didn't work because...
They, they did not meet the economic depression criteria that David was talking about.
Which we do, you're saying.
Which you do. You do substantially.
Okay. The, the, the last question I had was, there does seem to be a, a requirement that the, the money, which I assume to be the, the, I'm not sure whether that is the 10 million or the, I guess it's, it's probably the 3.2 million, needs to be, is needed to make the project economically feasible. So what is the standard for meeting that? And it, you know, does it, do you need to show, like, well, this project is a library, this health, so it would not be built unless this tax credit happens, or...
That's correct. We do have to show that the, there is a funding shortfall. Now, the way we've done this on other projects is there's a big project. We're taking a particular component out. The dollars that you have don't have to be used on that component. They're used on the rest of the project. So we pick the, the component where there's going to be a shortfall. Again, maybe that's gaming, but that's what you do, is you see which, which part you want to do, and that's where you don't apply the money you have. You have an overall project shortfall, but you, the money that you do have, you're using on other components, not the component you're applying for. You do have to come up with 75% of that component, obviously, because otherwise they won't do the deal. But we're, we fall short by 25%. If you have all the money for everything and have no need for any subsidy, then you wouldn't qualify for this program either. So that's part of the, that's part of how it works. They kind of make these rules up, and you, either you comply, you don't. That's, that's basically how it works.
Comment question, Miguel?
No, I just think that, you know, as far as these rules, that's really how the federal government works with anything, any kind of money that they give out, you know. Federal government is always going to be, have a lot of bureaucracy behind allocating out funds and dollars. Personally, you know, I understand the concerns of my other colleagues. But, you know, this investment instrument for me is really, is understandable. I do understand, you know, the concerns about, you know, setting up the quote-unquote shell corporation. But if this is what's in the legal requirements to be done, then, you know, for me, it, you know, it is what it is. And I don't see anything, I won't say illegal about it, you know, in, in this case. The other thing too, and as I said earlier, Member Simon had been talking about this for, I mean, probably three or four years, and had been talking about it, you know, consistently every year. And, I mean, Member Simon is one of the most ethical persons that I do know. But I know from an experience standpoint, Member Simon deals with this in his everyday job. So I know that he knows about it, and he's, I don't want to say he's an expert, but, you know, if he can recommend this to the board and know what all the ramifications are, you know, I know it would, it's a, it's a good investment tool for this district to at least research. Now, I didn't know anything about it until we got the presentation a few weeks ago. And being a finance person, you know, I do understand the flow. And, you know, again, I think this is an opportunity for the district to fund some of the, you know, some, not only the building, but some of the elements in this project that we may have to cut out in the long run because of our shortfall. So, you know, for me, it's, it's really putting back those elements into the project that we may have to get rid of. So, I mean, for me, I think we really should, you know, and we may need another study session. We may, you know, I'm, I'm all for, remember, at Phil's suggestion as far as having legal take a look at this, and I think we should do that. But I think, you know, it will probably take another session for us to really come up with, you know, a, a definitive decision. Now, what that means as far as timing, I think that's the issue that I'm hearing right now. So, I don't know, David, I mean, how long do we have to make a decision? You know, and how long would these funders wait for us to make a decision?
I mean, they're waiting for the data. Tom has been trying to collect, Mr. Duffy's been trying to collect, Dr. Duffy's been trying to collect it. So, you know, we can tell them it's not coming yet. And again, it's still 2015. I don't know what happens with 2014. I'm not saying you won't qualify. It, you know, we'll keep plugging away, but the money could go somewhere else. It's not the end of the world. It's, it's up, it's up to you guys. I would hope that if somebody, if you had it looked at legally, then maybe the individual could look at it fairly quickly and get back to you by the next meeting and say, yeah, it looks okay, which I'm pretty sure they're going to say. But, but I understand your concerns, and it's not, you know, I'm sure it's not for everybody, so.
And if we were to do that, I mean, I would like to invite, you know, our former board member, Member Simon, to the conversation so he could give us his, you know, evaluation and opinion of this instrument as well, if we had to do the, if we had to wait that long.
This is up for, as an information item.
It's an information item.
Yeah, that's correct. Our staff's, well, staff's thought was that if the board wanted to at least begin the process, the formal process, that we would, that if staff gave direction, or the board gave direction to staff to work with Mr. Duffy and Mr. Tausig, that we would begin the application process. It's, it is not on the board for action, but I think board direction would be sufficient, at least to move through the process. Obviously, the board, in the face of any new information that would cause the board concern, could certainly at that point abort the process. But I think timing is the key issue here, especially since there are three CDEs that have been identified that are highly interested in the project. And so my, my suggestion, and Dr. Ruby and I discussed this, my suggestion is that you give us direction to, to move forward, to retain Mr. Tausig's firm to begin completing the application. We have identified a funding source for the initial work to be involved. There is, there are developer fee dollars in, in the developer fee fund that have to be expended because it's coming up to the five-year window. And the board will call from our previous budget study session. There's quite a bit of dollars, I guess that's a relative term. There are sufficient dollars in the developer fee fund to support this. This is in line with the purpose of what developer fees would be used for, to secure construction funding, and so that would not have an impact on the general fund. In the meantime, so we would recommend the board give us direction to continue to move forward. At the same time, consult with legal counsel and see within the week if we can get legal counsel's opinion on their analysis of this, of this funding mechanism for the school district. But in the course of doing those two things, we would not, we would not lose any time.
Well, I could, I could support, you know, staff moving forward personally, one board member, anyway.
So I, I was just going to say, I think we have to do that. I don't... The $15,000 expenditure makes a whole lot of sense for what we gained. We just had a presentation from Mr. Baker referencing a conversation about the takeouts just to ensure that we are on budget with this project. I, I think we really need to make sure that we're consistently approaching opportunities to ensure we have a, a smart project. And so I think that's the, you know, whatever comes out of that list, this is that opportunity to restore a number of things. And I'm sure wellness and the library has some components in that list.
Yes, so, oh.
We did recently communicate to the city about two weeks ago in a city district meeting that we would continue to seek out opportunities with that being the concern, that we would like to see the project completed. And they, as the city would, ideally as planned, if we could. So this could be one of those opportunities, I think.
Yeah, so, and just with that, I think it's, I mean, for, for me, I, I similarly, I'm, I'm quite excited about the opportunity. The mechanism is what it is. But I think, you know, we would be as prudent about establishing the right oversight in terms of a 501(c)(3) or whatever, the nonprofit, that's necessary, and do that so that they're completely focused on that piece of the work and not interact with any other organization. So I, I mean, I also see it as the city who has, was, who acts as a redevelopment agency. To me, it's just very similar. It's not, for me, in my mind, I don't see it as this big, different thing. So I have no issue with the structure. And I do think it's, of course, smart to have our legal counsel review and ensure that we are, you know, following the right path here. But I think $15,000 from the developer fees, which is all focused in that area, makes a lot of sense. And it does, it's not going to be missing from some other program, so.
So let me just add that, Mr. Baker, and we've talked about this in relation to the ongoing discussions with Turner Construction. And there, and he reminded me of the term I kind of got used to in Dublin, and that is, you know, the, the contract could be structured in a way to have a number of alt adds to the contract. Now, obviously, as they've gone through value engineering process, we, the, the committee that worked on it, the city staff and the district staff in talking with Turner, really tried to adhere to the concept of not affecting scope and quality because that is a concern, everyone's concerned, certainly is a concern of the city council. And so they made every effort to generate a list of value engineering items that didn't have that impact. But at the same time, if we're able to get this source of funding in the 2014 cycle, there would still be the opportunity to restore a number of those items through the way this contract is structured with Turner. Is that fair generally?
The, the group, the, the city and district stakeholders, in our analysis of items, focused and also in evaluating those on things which did not impact quality, had minimal impact on quality, we don't have anything that really impacted program. And so the, the prioritization of things that we may want to change, changes. It was done that way. So I mean, that, that's been a focus. In addition, I would say that the major, certainly the majority of those items could be added back in at a later date. The further along you get in the project, the harder it becomes to do that. But being that really for the first three months, August, September, October, up until November, we're working on foundations and structural steel and things like that. Many of these things could be added, you know, towards the end of the year. And as we finalize that list, as I pointed out in my presentation, we're, we're reconvening the week of the 7th of July. I think we can consider that further and really rank, rank, include items that can be plugged back into the project, if you will, down the road. What John spoke of is that we can also include this as additive alternates in the Turner contract so that if we plug them back in later, say that in February, we want to put a, a certain entry canopy or a certain spec item back in, we can do that. It would allow us to do that and also have, have that pricing predetermined.
So any, any, any issue with staff moving forward to do this initial phase and come back to the board, just as Dr. Sugiyama outlined?
I don't have a problem at all. I mean, it's a golden opportunity, and we should at least take a hard look at capturing the opportunity for these extra funds.
So I, I agree with that. I mean, I, I think that it does seem like an unusual opportunity. It has some unusual aspects to it. But I think the, the risk reward is extraordinary, you know. You, you, you put in 15,000, you get out 5 million. That's, that's a pretty good risk now. And, you know, I, I mean, I think it's worth, as I've indicated, spending a few thousand of our own money just on our legal counsel to make sure that, that this, this is... spending a few thousand of our own money just on our legal counsel to make sure that this is looking good. And you're going to provide us with information about where this has been done with traditional schools in other states. I mean, I think, as I said, I think the odd mechanism of this nonprofit seems to be an artifact of the Congress not wanting to invest federal money directly into our community, but created this other mechanism to do so. But if it's copacetic and legal, and Congress knows districts are doing this, you know, then we might as well get it, as opposed to a district in another state, or a charter school in Southern California, yeah, so.
And we have the ability, I mean, I just thought about that, and I'm not trying to stretch this to them at night, but we do have the ability to confer and just, you know, contact our congressperson as well. I mean, just to explain, you know, to express this is the type of thing, the opportunity, and, you know, this is the mechanism that we've got, and, you know, and take it, take it on.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It makes it difficult, it makes it feel uncomfortable, but, you know, this is the tool. But I was also going to mention to your point about it's gone, so, but yeah, I'm with you there. And that's an opportunity we have with our local, our federal, as well as state legislature as well, so.
But you know, one other quick thing. The federal government really does not make a practice of allocating funds for facilities. Am I right? They usually allocate funds towards programming, especially for schools. So I think this is a, really a unique opportunity to be able to capture funds from the federal government for facilities, because this is something that they really don't do.
I'm comfortable with staff moving forward and it coming back.
Any other comments?
I'm unclear. So staff moving forward, are we committing the $15,000?
Committing the 15, which does not require board action, I mean, true enough. So it's $15,000 to pursue and get greater information, and pursue this opportunity to, and I guess we'll, we'll get it back, I'm certain, 5 million times before we move forward, anyway.
Yeah. And just to the other comment about this isn't something the federal government does, that actually is what gives me pause, is that if this, if they were in the business of funding facilities, I'd be more for it, but the fact that they specifically say that's a state. And then, you know, I run through numbers, and when you add up the fees, I'm getting, you know, it's $7.8 million that we end up spending 5 million on public good. That's, you know, if I do the math right, because they're committing 3.9 twice, so that's 7.8. And so by the time it trickles down and everybody's taken their taste, and I'm using particular terms for a reason, it comes down to 5 million. So I, while this is an interesting mechanism, and this is how government works, I am always going to take a pause at, you know, when government is that inefficient.
But, you know, Member Pat, I will say this. I appreciate your comments and your concerns, especially from an ethical standpoint. And for me, as a new board member, it tells me a lot about you. So, you know, even though you have a little hesitation about it and some concerns, I still appreciate the fact that, you know, you were able to, you know, communicate, you're right, communicate those concerns.
And the board, if you do give us direction to move forward, can rest assured that if there's any hesitation by our legal counsel, I'll be certain to put the brakes on and alert you right away.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
No problem, thank you.
And just before you go, because I've been doing it all night, and I'll be called out if I don't. Any public comment to this particular topic of the gentleman? Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, I appreciate that.
President Dyson, I know the board has been sitting there for quite a while.
Can we take a break?
And would, if I were to-